This is a meeting of the City Council to order. I'd like to ask Councilman Bullock if he would pray over the session. He's standing.
Father God, we stand here today wondering what is going on in our beloved town, communities, everywhere, our miscommunication, our misdespair. It is a difficult time, Lord. The only one I can say most this time is you, Father God. We have people who are doing everything that they know what to do, how to do, and when it and it doesn't seem to work, but we pray each day we pray that the goodness that goes with you will visit us soon. We ask your blessings today from every person in this facility. We pray for all of our people, friends, neighbors, community, families, and all the beloved people. We seek your presence in our lives, oh God. Be with us, guide us, lead us, that we thank God and we can work with others. We're not doing everything right, but it's there. And you have raised us and followed you there. So we come to you this evening, asking your forgiveness for all the things that we have done that have not been successful and not rewarded by others. As I said earlier, it is a difficult time, a hardest time. But we have to follow you there. We ask you to continue to watch over us, keep us in your care, continue to bless us. And with it, all that we do, oh God, and we pray that many of your services is taken.
Okay, roll call my clerk.
Councilman Menai.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Walker. Belltridge.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna have to add an item into our genuine agenda of wanting to close session to discuss an economic development matter, uh, once representatives from Gateway's Partnership arrive. Uh, but until then, I guess we'll go to, uh, item number four, which is the approval of the minutes, the regular scheduled meeting the City Council held on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Recommended action is to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Belltridge, seconded by Blackwell.
Second.
I think we have a motion second. Is there any need for discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I amend the agenda to accept this new item, action item. Am I correct?
Has it been random, since you're speaking today?
Uh, no, the memo is really for your, uh, information. I also emailed it to you, but it's, um, in response to a request from, uh, Councilman of Belltridge. The amendment to the agenda is specifically related to a closed session, uh, to discuss an economic development initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Information on it, okay. Uh, with that said, item five, uh, City Manager, uh, Community Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, uh, we do know that all commission and board meetings have been canceled. In addition to neighborhood meetings, the Citizen Academy and the Rocky Mount Area Youth Council meetings are canceled. Program meetings such as yoga and the galleries and our arts programs are also canceled. The City Council Retreat originally scheduled for later this week and the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Workshop scheduled for April third have been postponed. Per the council's directions, there is now a moratorium on all utility disconnections until further notice and late fees will not be assessed during this time. If you are struggling and need help for your bill, with your bill, please contact the Business Services Center at two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-two-five-zero. During this time, it is important you remember to fill out and send in your twenty-twenty census form. By now, you should have received your form in the mail. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. And for more information or to respond, visit twenty-twentycensus.gov. And I believe that time for turning in your form has been extended by fifteen days, I think it is. The Communications, Marketing, and Public Relations Office has released the latest edition of My Rocky Mount Magazine. Our public utility customers were mailed the magazine over the weekend. The magazine looks back at highlights from our city in twenty-nineteen as well as initiatives, news, and schedules for twenty-twenty. My Rocky Mount was recognized last year for excellence at the North Carolina City and County Communicators Conference, winning first place for publications. The deadline is approaching for the first installment of the City Managers Awards Program, which recognizes employees as selling and exemplifying the city's core values. We appreciate those who have already submitted nominations. If you haven't done so already, you have until March thirty-one to get it done. Forms are available online at rockymountnc.gov. And if you have questions, please contact Jesse Nunnery at two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-two-six-eight. We have, uh, received some information concerning North Carolina Executive Order Number One-Two-Zero for March twenty-third. And this is an order that is coming down from, uh, Governor Roy Cooper. The order consists of the prohibition of mass gatherings is now moved to be more than fifty persons. The following entertainment facilities are ordered to close at five P.M. on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty-ten-twenty, though any retail or dining component, component may operate within that establishment solely for that purpose. And those facilities are bingo parlors, bowling alleys, ice skating rinks, indoor exercise facilities such as gyms, yoga studios, and martial art facilities, health clubs, indoor pools, live performance venues, movie theaters, roller skating rinks, spas, sweet steak lounges, video game arcades. Personal care and grooming businesses, including but not limited to the following, are also ordered to close barber shops, beauty salons, hair, hair salons, manicure slash pedicure providers, massage parlors, nail salons, tattoo parlors. Appropriate local governmental agencies are directed to continue to exercise their responsibilities, including but not limited to local county Department of Social Services offices, registers of deeds, and other local government functions that are required to protect people. Long-term care facilities shall restrict visitation of all visitors and nonessential healthcare personnel except for certain compassionate care situations, for example, an end-of-life situation. For this purpose, for purposes of this executive order only, long-term care facilities include all of the following: skilled nursing facilities, adult care homes, family care homes, mental health group homes, and intermediate care facilities for individuals with intellectual disabilities. Public school closures are extended until at least May fifteenth, twenty-twenty, and this order will be effective at five P.M. Wednesday, March the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty. Then finally, I would like to remind everyone, the City of Rocky Mount is working to ensure you continue to receive excellent municipal services during this coro- uh, coronavirus pandemic. For the latest citizen updates, you can visit rockymountnc.gov or access our various social media platforms. Also, I encourage you to follow all the safety measures recommended by the CDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. At this time, we'll hear petitions from the public. This is a time to remind you that these comments should not be personal in nature, not directed to any individual council member, but rather to the committee as a whole. Committee may or may not choose to respond, and we ask that you keep all commentary civil. I'd like to ask you to come to the podium, please identify yourself and your address. Johnny Cunningham.
Johnny Cunningham, five-fourty, Berryville Street, Rocky Mount, City Council. I need the City of Rocky Mount, this council, to defend me because I'm fighting all that I have, financially, spiritually, emotionally, this racism in this city. I've experienced it. I'm fifty-nine years old. Never did really understand or felt a real impact of being discriminated against as a black man in Rocky Mount. I've been other places, never experienced it. But here, the treatment that I've been, that I've received from white nonprofit, so-called Christian organizations, is appalling. I've had to defend myself in the court of law, in Nash County, and the treatment that I received in Nash County, the NAACP, and carried to the Supreme Court and win hands down. The system there and the treatment that I received was racist. I was discriminated against. The judges didn't even want to hear the case because of love of Rocky Mount and that group filed fictitious complaints against me, trying to silence me for exposing this racist behavior that's apparent in our city and is destroying, especially Ward Three. We can't make a move. We make a move one step forward and we're pushed back ten steps because of jealousy and hatred, because we refuse to allow our community and our children to be exploited with these entities from Nash County, these white entities coming in and exploiting the donations, uh, beguiling those that, that willingly, from their hearts, that want to, uh, uh, donate to the causes and the programs that we're implementing for our children. But they have the upper hand. They are the friends of the friends of those that donate. They're, they're, they have the influence over us, but the donations are not being distributed in the neighborhoods, especially Ward Three, with suffering. I petition this council to really put your foot down and help us as really being slaughtered by the racist nature in this city. Now, what we're looking at today, and when you look at what God has always done throughout history.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
I hope he's got our, our attention. We've got to make a change, a drastic change.
By the end of the petitions. Okay. Anybody from Gateway's Partnership here, out in the lobby room? Okay, we've got item seven here, which is a consent agenda. A is consideration of the following tax releases and/or refunds. Schedule A is the report of taxes under a hundred dollars approved for release and/or refund by the City Manager. Schedule B is a report of taxes over a hundred dollars recommended for release and for refund by the City Council. And B is consideration of recommendation from Chief of Police to declare surplus and retire K-nine police dog, Harry, and award K-nine Harry to Corporal William Whitley in accordance with provisions of the North Carolina General Statute one sixty-A dash two sixty-six-C. Recommended action, recommended action is to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Second, first by, uh, Knight, second by, uh, Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We want to introduce, uh, Harry, since he's in the, uh, in the council chamber.
This is K-nine Harry. He has been with the city for a little over seven years. He is a long-haired German Shepherd, originally came to us from Czechoslovakia. Uh, he is a, or he was a full control dog. He did pretty much anything we needed him to do. He looks a lot bigger than he actually is, most of it's all air. But he is a, he's been a good partner. He's ready for a slower-paced life.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item eight is consideration of ordinance ordering the community code inspector to proceed with demolition of the following elaborated lines. That is A five-o-two Clyde Street, twelve-twenty-nine Hill Street, ten-fourteen Arlington Street, and eight-eleven Clark Street. Uh, this was deferred from our February twenty-fourth meeting. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Um, so moved by, uh, Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item nine is the consideration of sale of one, uh, eleven-ten Sycamore Street to Oco Corral to a bid of three thousand dollars advertised for upset bids, and none were received. Recommended act- uh, uh, action is to adopt the resolution except for the offered purchase property.
So moved.
Moved by Knight, seconded by Blackwell. Is there any discussion?
Do we ever ask for any criteria on here, Madam Manager, such as, you know, fixing it up or making sure it's, you know, improves the neighborhood, or, or is that not even possible?
Well, actually, in this case, this is someone who purchased, um, a house adjacent to the property that she's wanting to purchase now. Okay, so, so it would be then.
Thank you, I didn't realize that.
Any additional comments, conversation, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item ten is consideration of the following recommendation from the traffic engineer, and that is to adopt fifty-five mile-an-hour speed limit on Red Oak Battleboro Road, which is State Road fifteen-twenty-four, between point seven-one-three miles west of North Carolina Four and one-point-oh-three-six miles west of North Carolina Four. B is fifty-five mile-an-hour speed limit on Red Oak Battleboro Road, State Road fifteen-twenty-four, between U.S. three-oh-one and point zero-two-seven miles west of U.S. three-oh-one. And C is to adopt forty-five mile-per-hour speed limit on the Red Oak Battleboro Road, which is State Road of fifteen-twenty-four, between the Edgecombe County line and U.S. zero-one. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance amending the traffic control ordinance map.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Joyner, second.
Second.
Seconded by Blackwell. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Uh, I don't see it in here, but I believe it's already been taken care of a little bit. Is this in compliance with, uh, anything else longer, especially additional traffic that may be generated by the business, uh, as you can see, other things under the process up and down?
City Manager, can you speak to that, or perhaps like a second?
Sure, um, actually, this is a action to correct, um, ordinance. The, uh, speed limit signs are already posted here and have been, so this is just a cleanup mechanism, um, to make sure that what we have on the ground is consistent with what is in the ordinance. I don't, I, I hope that helps to address that.
So this is not in any way changing the speed limit?
No, ma'am, it's already posted.
You're not changing the speed limits that are allowed in legal law, is that correct?
That is correct. The speed limits are fifty-five, fifty-five, and then forty-five in those designated areas, and posted as such.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eleven is consideration of mutual aid agreement with members of, uh, American Public Gas Association for emergency assistance in the event of a national disaster. Recommended action is to approve agreement, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? So moved by Councilman Bullock, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joyner. Uh, is there any need for discussion? Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, item twelve is consideration declaring certain personal property surplus and authorizing disposal by the electronic auction via Gov- Gov Deals, Inc. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution declaring property surplus and authorizing disposal by electronic auction.
So moved.
Moved by Blackwell, seconded by Walker. Any discussion? Miller, I'm sorry. Second, I'm Miller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration of the following bids. A Sunset Avenue Transportation Corridor Study is to award to Santa Services, Inc., a total cost of a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. North Carolina Department of Transportation will reimburse the city eighty percent of the study cost. Study area is Sunset Avenue from Buck Leonard Boulevard to Halifax Road. B, one new Elgin Crosswind Regenerative Air Street Sweeper based on bid awarded by Source Group Purchasing Program, formerly National Joint Powers Alliance. Contract number one-two-two-zero-one-seven FSC Super Vacuum Hydro Excavation and Street Sweeper Equipment with Related Accessories and Supplies. Award to Public Works Equipment and Supply Company, Inc., at a total cost of two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. And C, workstation and office furniture, award to Institutional Interiors, Inc., at one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and sixty-six cents, sixty-six cents. Development Services and twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and eleven cents to the community and business development for a total cost of one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Purchase through the North Carolina Division of Purchase and Contact Group Purchasing Program, contract number four-two-zero-A, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one forty-three-dash-one-twenty-nine-E-three Group Purchasing Programs. Recommended actions are to award the bids as recommended, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute bid contract for A on behalf of the city, and three, authorize the purchasing division to issue purchase orders and execute bid documents for B and C in accordance with the council's award. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Belltridge, seconded by, uh, Walker. Is there any discussion?
I've got a question.
All right, question?
Madam Manager, on the Sunset Avenue Transportation City, will there be an opportunity for the public to participate in that, whether there be any public meetings or anything?
Yes, that's, um, standard for the process, and since that is a very heavy, uh, business quarter, certainly the businesses along there will have an opportunity to speak.
I agree wholeheartedly and appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen is consideration of selection of development partner for the Tarboro Street Housing Project, development of between fifty and sixty housing units. Selection of the Walter Cooper Companies is recommended. Recommended action is to store project as recommended.
So moved.
Moved by Blackwell, seconded by Knight, was it? Any discussion?
Yes, I, I've got some concerns with this, especially in light of the, what we're going through right now with the COVID-nineteen. We all know that the revenues are going to be decreased in this city, just like, just this, uh, the last seven days, we had over a hundred and thirteen thousand people in North Carolina file for unemployment. Of that, I don't know how many are from Nash and Edgecombe County. Got concerns with, you know, when you have that economic downturn, the health of any company. Uh, I don't know if we're putting anything in any contract that we have about site control or when, if for some reason it falls through, if we have an opportunity to get that land back, uh, because if we lose control, what would happen if they have to, um, become liquid and, um, and sell that land? Do we have any control over that? Also, with the contractor, they've got to meet the low-income housing tax credit deadlines, and what impact will the COVID-nineteen have on that with the delays and so forth? Also, um, construction loans, they have a deadline, and can they meet the deadline? I have a concern with that. You know, and again, going with the revenue, this city's going to be stressed for revenue, and we need to protect all the money and assets that we have, because, you know, just last Thursday, we, um, this council approved for people not to pay their utility bill if, if they fall under, um, financial straits. We're also, a lot of businesses, restaurants are closing up because of, um, the emergency orders. A lot of businesses are closing up or added today, which means that the revenue for these businesses, people out of work, and the sales tax revenue for this city will be impacted. I just had, I just, I'm, I'm not so sure this is the best time to, to be doing this. I'm all for affordable housing. I think we should have it. I just think that, um, I've got concerns with this as, as well as with the contractor being able to, um, the health of the contractor. I have no clue whether they're, uh, in health, uh, healthy business or, or not, but, um, back during the two thousand and eight, or whenever we had the housing prices, a lot of strong companies went bankrupt.
City Manager, you mind, uh, maybe answering that? And then if I also recall, uh, we were going to interview, or you were, you were going through the process of interviewing several companies, and maybe a little overview on that would be helpful as well, if you don't mind?
Certainly, uh, well, I would just say that, uh, in spite of the, uh, coronavirus, uh, the needs of this city will continue. And, uh, the next step in this process is to develop a MOU, memorandum of understanding, uh, with the developer to address many of the things that you have, uh, spoken about. So, um, I have, um, really no concerns to recommend to you that would stop this project from going forward. I think we can proceed with developing the MOU, uh, which would include whether or not the land would be leased, which of course would be the best position for the city to be in, uh, or if it's a sale. But again, until you have someone that you can sit down and talk to and negotiate these things with, then the project comes, um, to a halt. In terms of the funding for the project, you're correct. The, uh, LITC tax credits, uh, is a major part of this project, and, uh, certainly that was one of the things that we evaluated, was a very strong criteria. And this is a firm that has used LITC, uh, tax credit projects, um, for very strong performance in that respect. So, uh, again, uh, I would, uh, continue to recommend to the council that we move forward with the selection of the Walter Cooper Group. I would also add that you might recall, uh, at your last discussion of this, uh, there was some, some concerns about the Walter Group and Councilmember- the Woda Group. And council member Walker and I, uh, did meet or talked with, uh, the firm and aired out all of those issues. So we're ready to proceed with, um, the recommendation, which is to, uh, now sit down, uh, with Woda Cooper and, uh, develop a M O U that we will bring back to the city council for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
I'm not, thank you. I also think we have to be careful not to create the, uh, perspective that Rocky Mountain is not open for business. We are open for business. Uh, we fare better than most communities as far as infrastructure is concerned. Uh, we have a history of strength in the financial sector, and our downtown is working. And this is another reason to move forward. I think you spoke about job creation. This creates jobs, employs people. Capital markets are at their lowest as far as loans are concerned. So now was the time to borrow money if you're in business. And there's all, there are all kinds of incentives rolling downhill from the federal government, uh, to state government, to local government. What a wonderful opportunity it is to show everybody that we're in a growth mode, and we need to continue to do that. So I support this. I have full confidence in our legal team and our finance team and our housing team just working together, um, as professionals as they always have been. I don't think of any project that we've ever defaulted on at any time in the last twenty years. And, uh, we need people downtown, and we need opportunity for, uh, working folk to be able to live downtown as well. So I'm excited about it, and I fully support it. And I do hope we move forward. And as the city manager stated, you know, we'll have a chance to look at that M O U that might have some of that detail that I'm concerned about. So I'd like to make a motion that we improve.
Uh, we already have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're having a discussion, and so.
Sorry, I apologize.
Is there any other comment or question related to the matter?
I do, I support, uh, the development of the workforce housing. Uh, we have had studies to show that we, uh, the city of Rocky Mountain, need more housing, especially affordable housing. Also, we have a lot of economic development that's happening in the Twin Counties area. I see Mr. Norris, uh, sitting out in the gallery, and hopefully he's going to bring some more good news to us. So we want to continue this upward movement and show, uh, people in eastern North Carolina and all of North Carolina that Rocky Mountain is open for business, and we're still competing for business. And even in W B prayer, uh, we don't know what the unknown is. But we pray that our Father will have mercy upon us and spare us and keep us in His, uh, good care. And bless this city and bless us financially, which He has done, uh, for the last over a hundred years. And so we're looking for prosperity. That's what I'm looking for, you know, healthy community. Thank you.
Is there any additional commentary or questions? Be none. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, carries. Uh, brings us to item fifteen is really a reminder component where we have several appointments or vacancies that need to be filled. If anybody has a appointment, this will be a time to mention a name. All right, be none. We'll move on to item sixteen, which is a closed session for economic development. So I'll have to ask everybody to part, uh, chambers, the exception of the Gateway's partnership, partners. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to go into special?
So moved.
First by Knight, second by Blackwell. All in favor, by the same aye. Opposed, like sign.